Good evening. My name is Kathleen Brown, Chair of the Virginia Beach School Board, and I hereby call this meeting to order at 6:01 PM on April 8th, 2025. Madam Clerk, would you please announce the role?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board chamber are Chair Brown, Vice Chair Weems, Mr. Bowen Steele, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Mr. Cummings, Dr. Green, and Ms. Rogers, and Ms. Dwyer.
Okay, thank you. And just for the minutes, Ms. Melnick is out for personal matters, and Ms. Felton is out due to the death of her husband. With that, we will now observe a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us as you are able. All right, now we get to the most important and the most fun part of the evening, and that is to honor and recognize some of our students tonight. We have about forty students who we will honor, so that's super exciting. Congratulations to everyone. All right, first, we have the First Colonial High School Girls and Boys Swimming.
We will start our recognitions this evening with Class V State Champion Swimmers. First, let's please welcome the Girls 400-Yard Freestyle Relay Team of First Colonial High School. The relay team includes Juniors Dara Duffy, Nora Everhart, Maurice Marcone, and Senior Tara Teague. Prior to winning the 2025 Class V Swimming Championships, First Colonial's Girls 400-Yard Freestyle Relay Team also won the relay districts and regionals. Their collective time of 3 minutes, 29.62 seconds, was nearly 2 and 1/2 seconds faster than the second-place finishers while also qualifying for All-American consideration. Dara Duffy's anchor split was the fastest relay leg across the entire field. In addition to being on the relay team, Dara is also the 2025 Class V Champion in the 100-yard freestyle. Dara won the 100 freestyle with a winning time of 51.26 seconds. The team's coaches are Liz Shroud, Robin Lang. Congratulations, swimmers. We're proud of you. And now we'll recognize the Class V Boys Swimming State Champions, 400-Yard Freestyle Relay Team of First Colonial High School. Please come forward. The relay team is made up of sophomores Parker Knapp and Wilson Wood, Juniors Austin Temple and Chase Wilkerson. First Colonial's Boys 400-Yard Freestyle Relay won the Class V State Championship by over 3 and 1/2 seconds. Their collective time of 3 minutes and 6.01 seconds was more than 2 seconds under the qualifying time for All-American consideration. Prior to winning the state championship, First Colonial's Boys 400-Yard Relay set a new school and district record. Austin Temple's anchor split leg split was the fastest relay leg across the entire field by well over a second. In addition to being on the relay team, Austin won the 50-yard freestyle, the 100-yard freestyle, setting Class V records in the 50 style and the 100 freestyle. The boys are also coached by Liz Shroud and Robert Lang. Congratulations. We are proud of you. Our next recognition is for the Class V State Champion Wrestling Team. Please welcome the Falcons of Cox High School. The Cox High School Wrestling Team battled through a grueling season, taking on some of the best teams at both the state and the national levels. One of the coaches says the team has one of the most competitive schedules in the state, which prepared them for winning another state title. Despite the challenges, the team remained resilient, using each setback as a motivation to improve. The students' relentless work ethic and determination paid off in the postseason as they all peaked at the right time and dominated the state tournament. With clutch performances and unwavering grit, the team secured its second state championship title in a row, proving that perseverance and dedication lead to championship success. The team members are Aiden Dogarty, Seth Pringle, Carson Miller, Caleb Raphael, Landon Cahill, Grayson Cahill, Carl Ludwig II, Vincente Granada, Ethan Marula, Rudy Wagner, James Cornelius, Isaac Tomas, and the coaches are James Schubert, Adam Watson, Dylan Watson, Thomas Taverner, and Dalton Head. We would also like to congratulate Carl Ludwig II in the 150-pound weight class on winning his first individual state championship title, and Rudy Wagner in the 190-weight class on winning his second individual state championship title. Congratulations, Falcons. We are proud of you.
Next, we will recognize VHSL Class V and VI State Wrestling Individual Champions, starting with Callen then Lanston, then Princess Anne, Salem, and Tallwood High Schools. Our next recognitions are for individual wrestling state champion winners from several more of our high schools. From Callen High, please welcome Brody Ottman and Callen Good. Brody is a senior competing in the 138-pound weight class. He has won the Region 5A and the VHSL State Tournament two years in a row. His only losses were from students outside of the state the last two seasons. Brody's ability to stay both calm and confident during hard matches has kept him on top of the podium in the state even when matches are close or a call doesn't go his way. Brody has ended his high school career with a total of 126 in-season wins and has been a leader in the mat room for the past four years. Callen is a senior competing in the 144-pound weight class. He won both regional and state competitions this year. He only took one loss the whole season. Callen started wrestling his freshman year and made it his goal to win the title by the time he graduated. Callen suffered a season-ending injury last year, which caused him to sit out for most of the year building up to this. It is incredible how hard he worked to win the state championship in his class. These two gentlemen are coached by Mike Binzel. Congratulations both to Brody and Callen. We are proud of you. Our next recognition is for Class VI State Wrestling Championship from Lanston High School. Please welcome Rafael Hiato... Rafael... Rafael Hiato... Sorry, Hiato Otero. Rafael is a senior who competes in the 126-pound weight class. He placed in the state wrestling tournament all four years of high school, and he finishes his high school wrestling career with a record of 136 to 31. His coaches are James Sanderlin, Bryce Sanderlin, and Gerald Latimore. Congratulations. We are proud of you. Our next recognition is for Class V State Wrestling Champion from Princess Anne High School. Please welcome Ethan Van Ostrand. Ethan is a four-time regional place winner and a four-time state qualifier in wrestling. He concluded his senior year at Princess Anne High School by winning both the 2025 Region 5A Championship and the 2025 Class V VHSL State Wrestling Championship at the 132-pound weight class. At the regional tournament, he pinned and teched his way to the finals, where he won by a score of 8 to 4 over a returning state champion. He was voted Outstanding Wrestler of the Tournament. On March 1st, Ethan won the state championship by a score of 4 to 1 over a previous state champion. Ethan finished his senior season with a 34 to 5 record. He currently has a 3.9719 GPA and will continue his educational and wrestling career at the Prentice School in Newport News. Ethan's head coach is his father, Raymond Van Ostrand. Congratulations, Ethan. We are proud of you. Our next recognition this evening is for Class V State Wrestling Champion from Salem High. Please welcome Hunter Elliott. Hunter Elliott was a three-year starter for Salem. He won the 2023 Regional Championship. Unfortunately, his junior year, he sustained an injury that ended his season. This year, Hunter was laser-focused on his goal of becoming a state champion. He notched over 100 wins in his career this season. He was a regional runner-up for 2025. Then, on March 1st, he won the VHSL Class V State Championships in the 120-pound weight class against an opponent who had been his rival for the majority of his high school career. Hunter is coached by Gabe Crawford. Congratulations, Hunter. We're proud of you, too. Our final two recognitions this evening are for two state champion wrestlers from Tallwood High. First, welcome Colton Hep. Colton is a junior who competes in a very competitive 113-pound weight class. He didn't give up a single point in the state championship. Colton completed the year with a 44-3 overall record. Colton volunteers to teach the youth in the Tallwood Wrestling Club. Colton's coach is Travis Ferguson. Congratulations, Colton. We are proud of you. Next, we have Tatiana Dennig. Please come forward, Tatiana. Hey, there you are. Tatiana is a junior who competes in the 145-pound weight class, which she won in the VHSL State Girls Open Championships. She is a fierce wrestler that completed the year undefeated 23 to 0. She won the regional championships and the state championships in dominant fashion. She is a three-year varsity starter and an asset to Tallwood High School. She volunteers often in her community and is a mentor to all student athletes, especially females in the sports. Tatiana is the first girl in the Beach District to win a state wrestling championship. Her coach is Travis Ferguson. Congratulations, Tatiana. We're proud of you.
Okay, that brings us to the adoption of our agenda. There is a couple of additions and modifications. The first one is to Action 15C. There's been a request from administration to vote on those. The first one will be number three. The second one will be number one, and the third one will be number two. And the reason for that is that the first and second vote are what's going to fund the third vote. So that impacts the outcome potentially. Sure, it's going to be number one will be three. Number two will be one. Number three will be two. Additionally, for committee assignments, we're going to add E for removing Carolyn Weems from the Mental Health Task Force. And then, are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented and modified? Mr. Culpepper?
I emailed a resolution to the board last night, which I'd like to add to the action agenda.
Okay, so you have a motion on that resolution?
Correct. I move to add that resolution to Action Item E.
Okay, so that... The motion is the Resolution to Comply with Legal Obligations in Exchange for Receiving Federal Financial Assistance. Is there a second? Okay, seconded by Mr. Bowen Steele. Any discussion? All those in favor of adding that, we're going to vote on adding that to the agenda?
So, Madam Chair, we have six ayes and three nays, so the motion did pass to add the resolution by Mr. Culpepper to the action item.
Okay, are there any other modifications to the agenda as presented? Sorry, so...
Was that F?
F. Mr. Culpepper's is F.
That's what I just wanted.
Okay, all right. I call for a motion to approve the agenda as presented and modified, moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Weems. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the votes to approve the adoption of the agenda as modified.
So, Madam Chair, we have seven ayes and two nays, so the motion did pass for the adoption of the agenda as amended.
Okay, thank you. We are now on the Superintendent's Report and Administrative Recognitions. There is no report or recognitions this evening, so we will move on to the approval of the meeting minutes. Are there any modifications to the March 25th, 2025 School Board Meeting Minutes as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the March 25th, 2025 Minutes as presented, moved by Mr. Callen, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the March 25th, 2025 Meeting Minutes.
So, Madam Chair, we have nine ayes, and the motion did pass for the approval of the March 25th Meeting Minutes as presented.
Thank you. We are now on to public comments. The School Board will now hear public comments on matters relevant to pre-K through 12, public education in Virginia Beach, and the business of the School Board and the School Division from citizens and delegations who signed up with the School Board Clerk prior to noon today. The purpose for the Public Comments section is for the School Board to offer an orderly form to receive public comments during the School Board meeting. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chambers to be civil in discussion and decorum. Whatever views you wish to discuss, the School Board wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and perspectives are heard. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Madam Clerk, please introduce the first speaker.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our first speakers will be Chrissy Riggs, Tora Riggs, and then Kara Johnson. Chrissy Riggs. Tora Riggs. Kara Johnson.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the School Board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Kara Johnson, and I stand before you, not just as a teacher, but as a former student of Virginia Beach Schools. My passion for education began in these very classrooms. Inspired by a teacher who poured her time, energy, and heart into me, and I was not one of the easy ones. Her love for teaching made me want to be that kind of teacher, the kind that who would change his lives. When I stepped into this profession, I was given four walls, a roster of students, and a mission. Every day, I dedicate countless hours to ensure each child gets what they need, differentiating lessons, responding to parents, supporting my colleagues, and helping with after-school activities. I don't do this because I have to, but because I love it, because I believe in these students and what I do every day. But that love is being exploited. My passion is not an excuse to overwork me. My dedication is not a reason to undervalue me. I should not have to beg for a raise while being expected to give 110% every single day. My daughter cries when she sees me bring my laptop home because she knows, even at her age, that my students often come first. No other profession demands that this level of sacrifice while asking its workers to prove again and again that they deserve basic respect and fair compensation. If you haven't stepped into a classroom or haven't felt the weight of shaping young minds while navigating endless expectations, then please do not make decisions that ignore our reality. I ask you, does it still feel like a privilege to wear the Virginia Beach School badge? I stand in front of you, I stand in front of a classroom and say, this is what I was meant to do. Yes, for me, it is a yes. Even if I'm not appreciated, I will continue to teach because this is my passion. My passion alone cannot sustain an entire profession. And while it's a yes for me, the younger teachers are not staying. They're leaving because of these issues. We need action. We need respect, and we need you to get this right. Thank you. Thank you, Woodstock, for supporting me.
Our next speaker is Cody Connor, Diane Muscovac, and then Amanda Kimball.
Just back in March, there was an executive order issued returning the power of education to the states. What was it, two weeks later, just last Thursday? There was then a letter sent to all state's K through 12 schools demanding that you structure your schools the way this administration wants and remove all diversity, equity, and inclusion, or else? Guess nobody ever told them you can't have your cake and eat it, too. But it's okay. I know you'll sign it. Despite any questions of legality or authority, you'll sign. Some thinking you can just rearrange some language. Some will be eager to root out all hints of diversity, equity, and inclusion in our schools, but either way, you'll sign. So that's not what I'm wondering. I'm wondering if we'll ever have enough heart and spine up on that dais to truly stand up to these liars, hypocrites, and bullies. Spine and heart. Bravery and kindness. I'm not questioning your moxie. I just want you to understand that the difference between good and evil is not courage. Both sides answer the call to war just as eagerly. The difference is compassion. You can have as much courage as you want, but without compassion as your compass, you will find yourself fighting the wrong battles for the wrong causes. Everybody will have moments in your life where you will ask yourself who you are. Would you have fought to free people or to own them? Would you have hidden Anne Frank, or would you have turned her in? Would you have marched with Dr. King or condemned him? We'll all have those moments. But some of us will stand in moments of historic importance, where you will be required to do more than just ask. You will be required to show who you are and have it recorded by history. We stand now, all of us, in one of those moments. Make good decisions.
Our next speaker is Diane Muscovac, Amanda Kimball, and then Burke Stringfellow.
I've got great news from the National School Chaplain Association. Just recently, I received an email from CEO and founder of the NSCA, Rocky Malloy. He reports that more states are joining the movement. His email reads, "Hello, Diane. God continues to open doors. Across the nation, momentum is growing as more states take decisive steps to recognize the vital role of school chaplains. Thanks to your prayers, advocacy, and support, multiple state legislatures have successfully moved chaplain bills through education committees and onto the next stages. While this progress is exciting, the work is far from over. Many states are on the brink of passing key legislation, but they need strong community backing to cross the finish line. Now is the time to take action and ensure that every school has access to a chaplain who can provide emotional, spiritual, crisis and trauma support to students and faculty. Here's how you can help right now. Find your state on the list below of current school chaplains. Call and email your state senators and representatives in support of your bill. Organize a church group and visit your state's capital to advocate in person. Encourage your local schools to consider a chaplain program. The NSCA can provide guidance and resources. Forward this email to friends, churches, and community leaders who can help. Every step forward is a victory. Together, we are witnessing history in the making, ensuring that chaplains can serve students, teachers, and communities in schools across the country. Thank you for your unwavering support. We couldn't do it without you. In service to Jesus Christ our Lord." So here's a list of states with current school chaplain bills. There are Arkansas, Alabama, Arizona, Illinois, Iowa, Indiana, Kansas, Kentucky, with Maine and Minnesota having newly filed bills, Maryland, Missouri, Nebraska, Oklahoma, South Carolina, Tennessee, and many other states pending, including the states that have chaplain's bills in place. That makes 20 out of our 50 states that have recognized and are recognizing that only good can come from bringing God back into schools. The email also reports on current United States institutions that have chaplains. Some of these are the U.S. Military Hospitals, the U.S. Senate, and corporations, only to name a few. It's time that our public schools have chaplains. We're fighting for our nation's future. Bring God, faith, and prayer back to the U.S. public schools. Chaplains make campus and environments calmer and safer and are trained to care for people of all walks of life, regardless of their beliefs. Let's work together to change the hearts of people, starting at a young age, as early as kindergarten. God's children deserve to feel safe in school. Let's make Virginia the next state to pass a chaplain bill. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Amanda Kimball, then Burke Stringfellow, then Elizabeth Shure.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chair Weems, members of the school board, and Dr. Robertson. My name is Mandy Kimball, and I'm a kindergarten teacher and VBEA school representative at Woodstock Elementary. I'm also a parent to a junior and an eighth grader. I'm speaking tonight about how woefully inadequate Virginia Beach has been in keeping up with the state's average and our surrounding cities in regard to pay. Rates have not kept up with inflation, and a raise will barely cover the rise in our cost of living. In fact, when the cost of living adjustments and inflation are factored in, the average teacher's salary in Virginia Beach is currently two hundred dollars a year below where it was in twenty fifteen. We have not had a true raise in ten years. As a member of the VBEA Board, I've also heard story after story of instruction, instructional and classified staff who love what they do but struggle to make ends meet. Many work two or more jobs or live outside of Virginia Beach where housing is more affordable. I have worked summer school the past six years to further boost my income. Another reminder, the never-ending increasing rise of prices was evident at the last school board meeting two weeks ago discussing the rising cost of student activities. Both of my children are in multiple sports and activities. While support the raises for coaches, it's just another large deduction from my bank account when I purchase the family pass just so I can see my children and their friends participate in the sports and activities they enjoy. Also, I would like to remind the board that those family passes do not always include out-of-district or conference games, district meets, regionals, or state meets. These are all at additional cost. As a member of the community and representative for educators, I can attest that we are in a dire situation if Virginia Beach plans on retaining and attracting highly qualified educators. The Wall Street Journal surveyed that fifty-five percent teachers reported plans to leave the education field sooner than planned. While compensation is a significant factor, teachers often feel undervalued and unsupported while dealing with the difficult demands of the job. Not only are we managing an unrealistic and unsustainable workload, we are absorbing our students' struggles, their stress, and school-wide expectations. Teachers do not get the luxury of stepping away from our jobs at the end of the day. We are the ones in the classroom every day making relationships and in the trenches dealing with a huge variety of behaviors and needs our students have. We are the ones who spend all day making our students' learning environment safe and engaging. We are the ones our students are excited to see at the start of the day. We are the ones who stay late, planning, and making authentic learning experiences. I've seen my colleagues put their students over their own needs times and times again. I'm proud of the work that me and my colleagues do, and my own children have benefited from having fabulous teachers in Virginia Beach. Please step up and take care of our staff so we can take care of the students. Your elementary school educators continue to feel ignored by the school board and the division. Show my colleagues and I the professionalism we deserve and compensate us at a highly competitive level. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Our next speaker is Burke Stringfellow and then Elizabeth Shore.
Hi, Burke Stringfellow here. I'm a fifth-grade teacher at a public school, and I recently heard that the federal government issued an ultimatum to all public schools that if they don't stop their DEI programs, they're going to cut all their federal funding. For us, it's about a hundred and fifty million dollars, and it's for super important stuff like Title I and food support. Uh, so I just want to give, uh, two reasons, regardless of what you think or how you feel about DEI, why this should be seriously offensive to you. Number one, gross hypocrisy. As I speak, the federal government is dismantling the Department of Education under the justification that they want to return, they want to give more power to the states to control their education. Okay, so let me get this straight. You want to give the states, you want to give us more power to control our education all while forcing down our throat a federal directive on how we must do education? Okay, you know, so I apologize for the vulgar letters, but that's some serious BS. Number two, okay, this is, this is support for our children that need it most. Okay, we're talking about schools in the lowest-income areas of society that need it for their books. They need it for teachers, it's literally existential. And then food support, that's paying, I see it all the time. I, I try to make a point to go to lunch at least two times a week with my kids, I see how they need this, you know? Uh, I needed it growing up. Uh, it's where they pay for your lunch, you know, I needed it, and, and, you know, me and my mom, we needed it. And I never would have thought that thirty-five years later, the situation would be worse. You know, society is supposed to trend in the positive direction, but things have gotten worse. Why? I'll tell you why. Because apparently, the rich need more. Yeah, I said it, you know, income disparity, wealth disparity, I should specify, wealth disparity has never been this bad. We have three individuals that own more wealth. Bezos, Musk, and Zuckerberg own more wealth than the bottom fifty percent of the entire country. The top point, the top zero point one percent of Americans own more wealth than the bottom ninety percent of America. It's so ridiculous, I look that up every time before I quote it. February twenty-fifth, Jen Kiggins and the congressional Republicans passed the, uh, resolution, the budget resolution to increase the federal national debt by four point five trillion all while attacking Medicaid, food stamps, we know they're looking at Social Security and Medicare. All for what, you know? They literally want to take the food out of poor kids' mouths. I wish that was hyperbole, but that's really what's happening. And the other day, I heard a guy talk about that he had a heart transplant, and he's dependent on immunosuppressant therapies if he, that he gets from Medicaid, if he doesn't get that, he's literally going to die, he is quote, quote-unquote, it's a death sentence for me. What they're doing in D.C. is playing with people's lives, you know, all for what? So the rich can buy more boats? So they can have more power? Well, let me tell you a little something about power.
And that is time?
We're going to take it back.
And that is time. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Shore.
Okay, good evening, my name is Elizabeth Shore. I'm here tonight to comment on the DEI certification letter from the Department of Education. I'm a former Virginia Beach City Public School teacher, and I have three daughters who graduated from Virginia Beach schools. Um, so tonight, I'm speaking to you as an educator and a parent, but most importantly, I'm speaking to you as a citizen. I want to be clear in our understanding of the purpose of the certification letter. Virginia Beach schools, along with all other public schools in the United States, is being extorted. This is extortion. By definition, extortion is the act of obtaining something of value through the use of force, threats, coercion, or intimidation. This letter is just the latest playbook of Donald Trump and his callous administration. He does not care about our country's most vulnerable students. He is willing to sacrifice them to force educators, schools, and communities to bow to his politics, his ideology, and his interpretation of civil rights laws. He knows we will not abandon our students, and we know that in his administration, cruelty is the point. The vague language in the letter is meant to scare us from offering the programs we know our students need. The U.S. Department of Education wants us to sign a certification letter that does not even define the kinds of diversity, equity, and inclusion practices the Trump administration deems illegal. Uncertainty and fear are being used to exact our submission. This certification letter preys on the weak. Students in states with strong governors and attorneys general are being protected at the state level. These states rightfully ask, what authority does the federal government have to demand that a local school division agree to its interpretation of a judicial decision or change the concern, the terms and conditions of federal funding without a formal administrative process? In Virginia and other states led by cowards that kneel before Trump, school divisions are on their own. Divisions with money can refuse to sign, knowing they can still meet the needs of their students while figuring out and fighting the legal battles over federal funding. It is my understanding that Virginia Beach Schools has determined that it's too vulnerable to risk the funds and must sign. Whatever the case, we must have the courage to stay the course and continue the programs we have established for our children. New York is one of the states refusing to sign. In their response, they state, the current administration seeks to censor anything it deems diversity, equity, and inclusion, but there are no federal laws prohibiting the principles of DEI. And the U.S. Department of Education has yet to define what practices it believes violate the law.
We're going to move on to our online speaker, Sidney Tom, please unmute.
Hello. Hi, um, my name is Sidney Tom, and I am, uh, coming here today to, um, just bring to your attention an incident that occurred, um, with me a couple, two Wednesdays ago. Um, so I am a Virginia Beach resident, I live in District Eight, um, under, um, a school board member, is David Culpepper. So I, um, as well, my wife, a mother of three, young children, as I just said, live in the Thalia neighborhood, walking distance from Thalia Elementary School. Um, to my knowledge, um, public use of the elementary schools, um, in the city is allowed outside of school hours. Um, and so, um, again, as a mother, I need time to get out. I, there's a tennis wall at the school that decided to, um, use, utilize and, um, at about seven AM on a school day, and thinking that no one would be there because I believe the school day begins at about eight forty, um, pretty, we're going to be there for about twenty minutes, um, with my cousin. We go to the wall and begin to play, um, but then about ten minutes insecurity comes out and, um, a request that we leave, um, as, uh, sent by the principal um, because initially, they were saying twenty-four-seven, you cannot use the property, and, um, we don't want others seeing you and doing the same thing. Um, which was, uh, was definitely scare tactics. Um, which, you know, it's okay, so we left, um, without any hesitation. And, um, as we were getting back into our cars, the principal, um, stormed out with frustration. I believe, um, her name is Nicole Karros. And no, no greeting, um, but decided to, uh, ask us if we had any, if she decided to, it's kind of a lie, told us that we had questions from the security guard, which we did not, um, and then um, excuse my son's here, um, asked us to, um, if we needed a ride, um, indirectly asking us to leave. So I confirmed, and if she wanted us to leave, she said yes. The whole situation was very, um, I'm really unsure, so my main question is, or comment, is to get clarity, um, for the public on property use of the facility because to my knowledge, I should have had the right to be there, um, despite the, um, pushback from the principal. Um, and letting me know to leave is fine, but also the way in which it was done was very unprofessional. And so I wanted to come today to bring this to y'all's attention, um, and just for you guys to figure out how to get clarity to the public on how the property of elementary schools should be used outside of their school hours. Thank you.
And Madam Chair, there was our last speaker for this evening.
Thank you. That brings us to, um, the Policy Review Committee recommendations, and Ms. Lanetti, um...
Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. I'm Camille Lanetti, the School Board Attorney, and on behalf of the Policy Review Committee, I will be presenting the recommendations coming out of the March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five policy review meeting. I will warn you, there are fifteen of them, we were very busy this month, so you're going to get a lot tonight. The first one up is Bylaw one thirty-eight. This is regular meeting times, place, order of business, recess meetings, and work session, public hearings, retreats, and abridged meetings. What, this came to us, uh, on the recommendation, one of the school board members wanted us to consider what dates we would be having days and times for school board meetings. What you will see happen in Section A, which talks about date, time, and place of meetings, while it was relatively simple before, we really spelled it out this time, so I'm going to go ahead and read it to you with, although it's longer, we thought it was going to be easier for you or the public to understand how you pick your days and times for meetings. So Section A, which is date, time, and place, will now read, "The school board will adopt a calendar of meeting dates and times that will include regular meetings and planned special meetings. Notice remains will be provided as required by applicable law or regulation. One, during the months of January, February, March, April, May, September, October, November, the school board will generally hold regular meetings on the second and fourth Tuesdays. Two, at its discretion, the school board may schedule meetings on days other than the second and fourth Tuesdays. Three, during the months of July, August, and December, the school board will generally hold only one regular or abridged meeting. Four, during the months of January, February, March, special meetings may be scheduled to address the budget and other school board business on those Tuesdays when regular meetings are not scheduled." We'll be striking out some of the original language after that. Five, during the month of June, the school board may schedule special meetings to address the evaluation of the superintendent, the school board attorney, and other, and any other employees who the school board has responsibility for evaluating. Six, special meetings may be called in accordance with Bylaw one forty-six, may be set, or may be set when the school board adopts this meeting calendar. Seven, the school board reserves the right to change the date, time, or location of a previously noticed meeting upon compliance with applicable notice requirements set forth in the Virginia Freedom and Freedom Act. Eight, the school board reserves the right to meet at any other time, dates, and places upon proper notification to the public. Nine, in-person meetings, the school board will take place at the School Administration Building unless otherwise specified by the school board. And ten, when applicable, the school board may maybe held electronically or telephonically, and we'll be striking out a repeat line. There are only, uh, minor changes in the legal reference after that. While that is longer, we thought that was a better explanation for the public as to why you set your meetings. Are there any questions or discussions on Bylaw one thirty-eight?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, it's for Dr. Robertson. So, Dr. Robertson, when you mentioned this going to the policy committee, you mentioned one meeting in July. This also recommends one meeting in August, and I'm just curious, from the administrative perspective, if you think that's feasible?
I think it is. Uh, we'll try to make sure that we pack in everything we need to get packed in as far as hiring things in July and August. A lot of the data we get of end of year doesn't come in until July, and by the time we do the analysis and are ready to present it, it's September.
Okay, and I, I just wanted to confirm because as we're starting the school year earlier, I just wanted to be sure. Um, Vice Chair Weems?
Um, yes, and, and Ms. Lanetti, this does, um, allow us to add a meeting if need be.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, it, and you guys, in, um, in pastimes, we used to always just meet one time in August, years and years and years ago, because what we were doing is we were scheduling meetings and then canceling them because we just didn't have enough information on the agenda. So, um, but if we do find that we do have enough, we can always add that meeting. But this gives everybody an idea, and, and of course, it gives our staff an idea, especially in that July, um, if you want to, you know, schedule vacation or something. Thank you.
Good, no further questions. I'll move on to the first policy, which is Policy three fifteen, this is local funds. The only recommendations are minor script changes to that, otherwise this was just a five-year review. Are there any questions on Policy three fifteen, local funds? See, no questions for three fifteen, local funds. We'll move on to three nineteen, certain special revenue funds. The recommendations for this are simply updates to the legal references. We had no other recommendations to amend or revise the normal text in this. So are there any questions on three nineteen? Hearing no questions on three nineteen, we'll move on to three twenty. Three twenty is fines, fees generally. Uh, the changes in this particular section were to try to clarify for families when fines and fees might be imposed. So we would be adding a first sentence, just because I didn't have an existing first opening sentence before. It would read, "The school board may impose fines and fees as authorized by law. The superintendent designated is authorized to impose and take action to collect such fines and fees." The subsection we worked, spent more time with was in B. There was a concern by certain school board members that the public wasn't, and public and families were not adequately notified that there might be fines and fees that they'd be responsible for. So we'd be adding the following sentence to the, end of the first paragraph in B, which would be, "The superintendent or designated will provide annual notice to students and families through the student handbooks and the school division website regarding those fines and fees that are owed for students and their families and the, and the methods that will be used to collect those amounts due. Students and families will also be informed about the availability of financial assistance applicable to such fines and fees." And there are just some minor changes after that involving some, um, script matters in the legal references. Are there any questions on Policy three twenty? Hearing no questions on three twenty, I'll move on to three twenty-four, which is gifts, grants, requests, and property. After some looking at this, I decided I needed to reorganize this policy on there and add some more clarification because we didn't have breakdowns in this. So we've added Section A, which will be conditions of accepting gifts, requests, and donations. You'll see, we broke out the reasoning, so now we have seven different reasoning that are in there. Most particular under this section you would want to look at would be under number six, which is in addition, which would be, sorry, ASEX, which would be not required, that school would not require return of the property or donor control or direction of the use of the property unless agreed to by the school board. the use of the property unless agreed to by the School Board as required by federal or state grant. Um, that concern was that if we were, we did not want to be in a situation where we had to accept a gift that had conditions that we did not, as the School Board think were appropriate to accept. And number seven, when the conditions that would not be acceptable would be not require name or sponsorship rights that are inconsistent with School Board policy or regulations, or that the School Board determines are not appropriate for the School Division. And again, Section P, we added a section about, Section B, a reservation of rights with the School Board, reserves the right not to accept a gift, donation, bequests, or other form of transfer property. The School Board further reserves the right to dispose of, alter, modify, or augment any gift, donation, or bequest, other form of property that accepts. And that addition was just so that you are not restricted by a gift that you cannot then use in the future, or you cannot change or alter. So those are the recommendations for amendments to Policy three twenty-four. Are there any questions? Hearing no questions for three twenty-four, we're gonna move on to three thirty-one. The recommendations in three thirty-one have primarily to do with the changing from the term purchasing. You've seen us do that the last couple of meetings, even that, we're using the term um procurement more, so the title will now be cooperative procurement. Under Section A, we just did a modi- modification that you can use cooperative procurement with others, uh when other school board bodies are authorized it, and when it is in the best interest of the School Division to do that. Cooperative procurement is when another School Division has entered into a agreement that allows other School Divisions or governmental entities to piggyback onto their contract, which allows us not to have to go through a competitive negotiation or RFP process for that, so we can join on for this. We are not required to use that, but we can use it when it's in our, um, in our best interest to do that. And the other changes involve changing the name of the department from purchasing to procurement. Are there any questions on three thirty-one? Hearing no questions on three thirty-one, we'll move on to Policy three thirty-three, which is requisition purchase orders. The um Business Service Office is along with the rest of the Department of Finance has done a lot of work in looking through contracting, so there's cleanup language we're seeing here. So in this section, we're cleaning up the fact that we're not using requisitions, we're using our e-procurement system here. We've changed again the name of the Director of Purchasing uh to the Director of Procurement, and other than that, there's just minor scrivener changes throughout. Are there any questions on three thirty-three? Hearing no questions on three thirty-three, we're going to move on to three thirty-five, which is competitive sealed biddings and awards. There are primarily what I would call uh scrivener changes throughout this particular section, having to do with um adding some additional words and making sure that we're using terms that are consistent with the Procurement Act, and nothing significant has been changed in this section. Are there any questions on three thirty-five?
I have one.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, under C one, it says awards normally will be made to the lowest responsive and responsible that are made in the specifications. If service and quality are considered to be equal to that offered by other bidders. Um, why is the word normally included in this policy?
I know that language has been original to the policy. I can't tell exactly why they are using that particular term. I'm not sure of the best person to answer that.
Okay.
We might need to bring that back to the Director of Procurement to ask that question. Would you like me to get that clarified and sent back before this comes back on?
I, I defer to the Chair of the Policy Committee on that one.
Um, Ms. Lanetti, was this the case where sometimes um local, um, local choices are?
I believe that's a good example. There are sometimes where it might be the lowest one, but um sometimes other conditions that go into why we might check, we may have a preference for a local, you might be the lowest person, but you might be out of New York, and we prefer to pull someone from Virginia. That might be an example.
That's, that, that, I think, I believe, if my memory corrects me, um, we discussed that, and it was because in some cases, the cost could be higher, but the ship, you know, that getting the, the product here could be more expensive. So you don't always normally get with the lowest cost, but sometimes it's, it's not advantageous to. But we, I mean, if you want us to look at it and give you for sure, we can take it back.
No, it's okay. Thank you. Move on to Policy three thirty-six on here, which is receiving, paying for goods and services. Again, we needed to restructure this as an older policy, added a first sentence to that. The significant changes show up in Section B. Again, a lot of this has to do with the work that the Department of Finance has been working on, updating our contracting process. So under Section B, you're going to add a first sentence that will, the first paragraph, that will be, "The School Division's procurement manual must be followed when procuring goods and services. Purchase orders must be issued for all transactions unless otherwise exempted per the manual, and all transactions require either issuance of a purchase order or completion of payment requests." Striking out the rest of that, and then you would have a second paragraph that would be added as, "Payment for goods and services will be made only if an itemized invoice, receipt, or supporting documentation submitted and approved by an authorized employee in accordance with the procurement manual." And there's just some scrivener changes and strikeouts after that. Those are the recommended changes to Policy three thirty-six. Are there any questions on three thirty-six? Hearing no questions on three thirty-six, we'll move on to three thirty-seven, which is vendors, contractors, and sales representatives. Again, this is mostly cleanup language. In here, there's a sma- minor change into Section A, striking out the last sentence of pass service will be a factor for all other considerations that equal will be striped out, and references to compliance with um local preference laws. Other than that, there are no significant changes to the Policy three thirty-seven. Are there any questions on three thirty-seven? Hearing no questions on three thirty-seven, we will move on to three thirty-eight. Make sure it's staying consistent with that. Three thirty-eight is competitive negotiations, awards, small professional service contracts, striking out a couple of languages, and there are mostly in this section, we, this policy you're going to see our scrivener changes on here, getting updated the name of the section on here. We are pulling up our requests for proposals under A two, we'll be striking out the last part of that sentence, again, with A three, striking out the last sentence in that area. And on the side, the bigger change, biggest change we're seeing in this particular policy is going to come into Section C, which is authorized exemptions. This addition will now be, "The Chief Finance Officer designated may authorize exemptions for competitive practices set forth in the policy. When such exemption is consistent with exemptions authorized in the Virginia Public Procurement Act, the School Board will be notified of any such exemptions that are granted." That allows the Director of um, the Finance Office, uh, to Finance Officer or her designated to determine if there's an appropriate reason why we would use exemptions. After discussing this, the, the requirement that the PRC putting was that they make sure the School Board is notified at those times when we're going to use an exemption from the normal competitive pro- practices. Are there any questions on that policy? That will move us on to Policy three thirty-nine, which is competitive negotiation, awards, and procurement of professional architectural services. There are mostly scrivener changes here, a clar- clarification in Section D, which we're going to add a sentence, and not because of change anything, we just wanted to be clear. "If less than three firms respond, all qualified responding firms will be selected for the interview." Again, some strikeouts and formatting changes, but there are no significant other changes to this particular policy. Are there any questions on Policy three thirty-nine? Hearing no questions on three thirty-nine, we will now take a look at, we actually be at three eighty-two. Three eighty-two um is under, again, under Business Section, but this has to do with transportation. This was a policy that needed updated on the appropriate terminology, so it will now be transportation of students with disabilities attending special education, and will now be, the School Division will provide transportation of students with disabilities attending special education programs as required by applicable law and regulation. We feel that properly updated the terminology and reflected our requirements. Are there any questions on three eighty-two? Hearing no questions on three eighty-two, we will now look at five forty-nine. Five forty-nine is the Student Section under there, and under Student Section, this is interscholastic competition, and there was some outdated language. We simply moved past the time period where this language is relevant, so in Section B, under Virginia High School League, we will be striking out the parentheses, second paragraph, having to do with grade point average, because those are no longer relevant for us. Other than that, there are no other changes recommended for Policy five forty-nine. Are there any questions on five forty-nine? And I believe that brings us to the end of the PRC.
Ms. Lanetti, you skipped a policy.
Oh, my goodness.
Three eighty-nine?
Three eighty-nine. Oh, you know what? That's because we're using the outdated one. It's three eighty-nine, the overall, um, forgive, sorry. Thank you. Three eighty-nine, eh, Policy three nine is the overall general contract execution policy. This is probably one of the more referenced policies that we use. Under Section B applicability, we were going to update, there are some scrivener changes in that. We will update reference to the Virginia Public Procurement Act on there, and also the fact that if you wanted to find information about emergency procurements, they are in a separate policy. The recommendations are there. Minor scrivener changes. We have clarification on physical notes on there, noting that we're taking out the reference to capital project and physical notes that appears in a different policy. You'll see the notation that that appears now in three ninety for clarification for that. Uh, some discussion on the availability of funds have been added to that. Again, this is a fairly long policy, but most of this is scrivener changes, updating the um name of the department. I don't know if I see any else in here that's significant. Again, fairly long policy, and update to Section F, principal and department responsibilities. These are mostly formatting, structural changes to this particular area, make sure it's appropriately formatted, and I don't see any other significant changes to this policy. Are there any questions about three eighty-nine? With that, I do think we are now done, PRC recommendations.
Um, Policy Review Committee Chair Weems has a couple of comments.
Yes, I just wanted to point out um that on several of these, I think three of them, we did strike out when it said School Board or and/or designated, because we thought if it came to the level of the School Board, that all eleven of us should hear the information instead of just a designated. Um, and then also um, just for transparent purposes, if something comes to Crystal an exception, that she notifies the whole board. So again, letting all eleven of us find out the information. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, because it, it was, I think, in three or four different places. Thank you.
All right. With that, we are now on to twelve B, Jewel Labs Inc. and Altria Settlement Funds, and we welcome Crystal Pate, our Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Chairwoman Brown, Vice Chairwoman Weems, School Board Members, and Dr. Robertson. During this fiscal year, Virginia Beach City Public Schools has received settlement payments totaling six hundred and four thousand, four hundred and twenty-nine dollars and seventy-nine cent. One of these settlements amounting to four hundred and thirty thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars and five cent was received through the Altria Settlement. The second settlement amounting to a hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars and seventy-four cents was the third scheduled payment under the Jewel Labs Inc. settlement. These settlements are related to e-cigarettes and related marketing practices. These funds are currently deposited in our general fund, which must be used by the end of the fiscal year, or will result in these amounts becoming part of the reversion calculation. Previously, the School Board voted to allocate Jewel Settlement Funds to the Categorical Grant Fund to support the future development of the recovery school. By placing these funds into the Categorical Grant Fund, the Division retains the ability to carry over these funds into future fiscal years. There are no restrictions on how these funds may be used. We seek guidance from the Board on whether these funds should be allocated in the same manner to the continued support of the recovery school. And that concludes my comments, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, seeing none, um, if anybody comes up with, oh, Ms. Rogers.
Sorry. Um, so you're basically saying we have these funds from Jewel, and we're gonna be using them towards the recovery school. How many years' worth of funding for the recovery school do those funds give us?
I think, and I don't have the budget numbers in front of me that were, and I'm, I hate to quote numbers off the top of my head.
Yeah, so uh, Ms. Rogers, we've also submitted up a, another grant
Yes.
For one point five million dollars that we'll have a decision on by the first of May, um, which would also go into the calculation. It's hard to predict the growth of the recovery school. One thing we know that uh we're planning on for the first year of the recovery school is we're gonna have to pay for transportation, which we anticipate to be thirty-three thousand dollars. The rest of the funds that Virginia Beach will have to use in the first year of the recovery school are already appropriated from the state.
Right.
When we get into the second and third year, depending on the growth of the program, that thirty-three thousand dollars cost is expected to go up a little bit by more students attending, and if we, although we don't anticipate a significant amount of growth in the first two or three years, we could see a growth in year three or four where we have to add additional staff, which will then be a cost that's spread out across all five school divisions.
And, but that cost would increase if we can't get completed MOUs, correct?
Hold on just a second. So we're talking about right now, the agenda, the Jewel and Altria Settlement. We aren't on recovery school.
Well, 'cause she had said that that's where the money was going for.
Okay.
So I was just trying to figure out, like.
That's, in the past, that's, that's where it went, but uh, we need to just make sure that we stay on the settlement funds.
So I was just asking if that, tho- those would be an increased cost, meaning we would use more money, 'cause that's what I was asking. Do, so, we can't, we don't know a full amount of how long that this will last, I guess, is my question.
Well, and I think as Dr. Robertson indicated, I mean, there's a current budget, there's grant money that's, that's been asked for and currently received for some other grants, and so that will depend on the growth of the school and how much that will cost us the money. We're just asking the guidance for that money to be put in a categorical grant fund so that we are able to use that money in the future support of the recovery school.
Okay.
It would be available to the district.
Right. So if it, if it, where we're placing it, that means it can only go towards that expense.
The way it's, the way it's done in the past, and the way you would vote on it on the next School Board meeting, if so, if you so desire, would be that it goes into a categorical grant number that's actually signified for Jewel and Altria Settlements. And so that's what it's for. It doesn't say recovery school, but that's just what, what we use for. There's no restrictions on those funds.
Got it.
It's just, this is allowing us the ability to retain those funds for future use. If they stay in the general fund, then when we do a reversion calculation at the end of the fiscal year, those funds will revert back to the city, and then we would have to request the reappropriation.
Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
I think you actually just lost me. I was gonna ask a question, but you lost, you just lost me for a second, what you just said. Time to clarify that for me. Because the first thing you said was, uh, those funds are currently in the categorical grant, and they stay there, right?
No, they're currently in the general fund, and, and what we're, what we're asking is if the Board desires and gives guidance to move them to the categorical grant fund.
Okay, I got you now. Okay, so that, that was your request. I think, I mean, I don't wanna, I don't wanna say what Ms. Rogers was driving at, but what I hear her driving at is, I think we all need to understand where, where we are on the recovery school in order to answer your question in the, in the, at our next meeting. I would certainly need that information a little bit to know if, if that's the best use of it. I certainly, um, not forgetting the name, CIP, Pago. Pago always needs money, and so if we've got, if we've got a, uh, some unused funds we're not sure what to do with, I think that's always the right place to put it. However, we, we have previously stipulated where this was going, it was for that. So now I understand your message. Your message is where we have put it now ends at the, at this fiscal year, so we need to change something or use it.
Correct.
Okay, I understand.
Okay, I don't see any other questions. If anybody comes up with any other questions, just email them to Dr. Robertson and Ms. Woodhouse. Okay, um, we are gonna move on to the consent agenda. Are there any objections to the School Board voting on the consent agenda items as presented? Seeing none, I call for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Dr. Green. Any discussion? Seeing none, oh, there is no discussion. I call for the vote on the consent agenda.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the consent agenda.
Thank you. And that, we are now on to the personnel report and administrative appointments. Is there a motion to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty-five Personnel Report and Administrative Moved by Ms. Dwyer, seconded by Mr. Cummings. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the April eighth, twenty twenty-five Personnel Report and Administrative Appointments.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the approval of the April eighth, twenty twenty-five Personnel Report.
Thank you. We are now on to fifteen B, Local Special Education Annual Plan Application Report for Virginia Department of Education. I call for a motion to approve the Local Special Education Annual Plan Application Report. Moved by Dr. Green, seconded by Ms. Rogers. Any discussion?
Uh, yes, um, Madam Chair, there's a revision that is in your Yes, Madam Chair, there's a revision that is in your packet based upon the document that we received on Thursday, where there's some amended language. It's, in your packet, again, it's on the top, it says revised for question number one. And the original is right behind it, and you can see the changes that were made. It's, it's, some terms are removed, based again upon the discussion we'll be having later.
Okay, I'm going to give just a second to make sure that everyone has a chance to see that before we call for the vote. Right, seeing no discussion, I call for the votes to approve the Local Special Education Annual Plan Application Report for Virginia Department of Education as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the Local Special Education Annual Plan and Application.
Thank you. We are now on to see the rising cost of student activities. And so the first one we are going to do is the, I'll accept a motion to increase the cost of tickets in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. And so this is the, the one with the middle school discussion, Dr. Robertson, as you had mentioned. So is there a motion to approve that as presented? Moved by Ms. Weems, seconded by Mr. Bowen Steele. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Rogers.
I'm sorry, you just said that it was the one with the middle school. Wasn't that?
So, that is a little bit confusing, isn't it?
That's why I'm like, wait, what am I voting on?
Okay, the middle school ticket price increase is different, as we had discussed in the last meeting. Instead of being eight dollars, it is six dollars.
Okay, so when you said middle school, I looked immediately to two. That's why I'm like, am I voting on one or two? Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? All right. I call for the vote on the increase, the cost tickets in the twenty-five, twenty-six school year.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the ticket sale increase.
Thank you. We are now going to move on to the expansion of ticket sales for high school and middle school. I call for a motion to approve the expansion of ticket sales for high school and middle school. Moved by Vice Chair Weems, seconded by Mr. Culpepper. Any discussion? Seeing that, I do have a, a quick comment, and it's kind of all encompassing. You know, I never really like to raise the prices of anything, but these two votes that we are doing and just have done are the ones that are going to pay for the final vote in this package. And so I, I hope that Dr. Robertson will keep us updated on how this works out so that we can see if any adjusting is necessary. With that, I call for the vote to approve the expansion of ticket sales for high school and middle school as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the expansion.
Thank you. And we are now on to the increase of supplements for coaches and sponsors by ten percent and pay an additional stipend for coaches and sponsors whose team advanced postseason play. Do I have a motion to approve the increase in supplement of coaches and sponsors by ten percent and pay the additional stipend for coaches and sponsors whose teams advanced to postseason play as presented? Moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for the vote to approve the increase of supplement and stipend as presented.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass.
Thank you. We are now on to the Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education twenty-five, twenty-six Carl D. Perkins Grant. Call for a motion to approve the Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education twenty-five, twenty-six. Moved by Mr. Cummings, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Seeing none, I call for a vote to approve the Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education twenty-five, twenty-six.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass for the Local Plan and Budget for Career and Technical Education.
Okay, thank you. Now we are on to committee assignment update. I call for a motion to remove Carolyn Weems from the Mental Health Task Force. Moved by Ms. Rogers, seconded by Ms. Dwyer. Any discussion? Vice Chair Weems.
Yes, I just wanted to let my colleagues know because of my work schedule, I'm no longer able to make that three o'clock meeting. Thank you.
And I, I did just also want to comment, we had a couple of school board members that were willing to serve on the Mental Health Task Force but were unable to do so because of other committee assignments. So that is the, the reason that no one else has stepped forward. But Ms. Rogers is on that committee, and that does fulfill the obligation in our bylaws. With that, I call for the vote to remove Carolyn Weems from the Mental Health Task Force.
So Madam Chair, we have nine ayes. The motion did pass to remove Carolyn Weems from the Mental Health Task Force.
Okay, thank you. We are now on to the resolution for Mr. Culpepper. Resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance. So we're going to get a motion in a second on the floor, and then we'll have Mr. Culpepper read this. I have gotten, I think, more than one substitute. So as we navigate through these, try to keep your comments to the motions on the floor. Moved by Mr. Culpepper, seconded by Mr. Bowen Steele. Mr. Culpepper, would you please read your motion?
Absolutely. Resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance. Whereas the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach has previously adopted policies, procedures, practices, and strategic framework, including diversity, equity, inclusion. And whereas President Trump signed Executive Order one four one nine zero on January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-five, titled Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 Schooling. And whereas on February fourteenth, twenty twenty-five, the United States Department of Education Office for Civil Rights published a Dear Colleague Letter reiterating legal requirements under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four and Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution. Whereas on, and whereas on February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, the USDA released frequently asked questions about racial preferences and stereotypes under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. And whereas on April third, twenty twenty-five, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach received a request for certification of compliance from the Virginia Department of Education titled Reminder of Legal Obligations Undertaken in Exchange for Receiving Federal Financial Assistance and Request for Certification Under Title VI and SFFA versus Harvard. Whereas the deadline for this certification is April eleventh, twenty twenty-five at five P M. Now therefore be resolved that, one, the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach directs the superintendent or designated to work with legal counsel for the school board to take the necessary steps to comply with the above federal guidelines, excuse me, guidance under Title VI. Two, the School Board directs the superintendent to rename the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to the Department of Opportunity and Achievement, and to work with legal counsel for the school board to suspend all educational program offerings that do not comply with the above federal guidance, including but not limited to the Equity Plan, the Equity Dashboard, and, and any educational program offerings that would not comply. Three, the School Board directs the superintendent to suspend Policy five dash four until the Policy Review, Review Committee has brought recommended changes to the School Board for approval no later than May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Four, the School Board directs the superintendent or designated to work with legal counsel for the School Board to suspend any portion of the twenty twenty-five or twenty thirty strategic framework that does not comply with the above guidance, including but not limited to all reference to equity and equity emphasis, diversified workforce, the Equity Dashboard, and racial emphasis. Five, the School Board directs the superintendent or designated to recommend modifications to the twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty strategic framework to be in compliance with the above guidance for information no later than May fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Six, the School Board directs the superintendent or designated to work with legal counsel for the School Board to evaluate employment, contracting, and purchasing practices to ensure consistency with the above guidance. Seven, the School Board directs the superintendent to sign the certification and send it to the Virginia Department of Education. Eight, the superintendent or designated is directed to provide the School Board with timely updates concerning compliance with this resolution. This resolution is adopted by the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach on the eighth day of April, twenty twenty-five.
Okay, Mr. Culpepper, would you like to speak to that resolution before opening the floor?
Yeah, briefly, no. I'll let our colleagues talk here. I think the simple way for me to look at this problem is that we have two choices, not three. The choice some agencies have made here is essentially to claim they are eliminating DEI practices, change the name of the office, and then actually do nothing that actually changes it. Our two choices are to either honor the guidance we've been given and certify that we have done so and accept federal funds in exchange, or to basically state that we don't agree with these practices and to turn them down and to turn down federal funds by the same token. I obviously put forward that we don't do that.
Mr. Cummings.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to defer this vote to a special school board meeting on Thursday that we decide. I believe that the public has a right to review this resolution, given that it impacts and suspends policy that could impact study programs, bridge programs, tutoring after school, and other listed policies and School Board Policy five dash four. I believe that we have to have more information before we rush to a decision that we were just recently given, and that the public hasn't had time to digest to fully understand what had take place and what would happen. So I'd like to make a motion to defer this vote to Thursday, to a time that we agree as a school board to meet for a special meeting.
Ms. Lanetti. So there's a motion on the floor to defer this to a special meeting on Thursday, and I know that we have special processes for special meetings.
Special meetings only require a notice reasonable under the circumstances, so you could, you could set that meeting now. It's a motion by a school board member. You would have the board can vote on it right now. He's asking you to actually vote, which is one method to get a special meeting.
Okay, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Rogers. Dr. Green, are you discussing the deferral?
Um, no.
Okay. Any discussion on the deferral?
But I didn't want to make comments. My comments are relevant to the original resolution.
Okay, so if this motion passes, then it would be on the next meeting, so. Okay, Mr. Cummings, do you have comments on yours?
My comments, I just want to reiterate that I think it's important that the public has time to read through this document because it was not shared within our school board agendas and that they have time to evaluate and provide feedback to the school board if this is the direction that we should or should not be going. I'm of the opinion that some of these things on here extend beyond the requirements, but I would also like the opportunity for the public to weigh in, and I think that's a fair ask, that we are a transparent board. We serve the citizens of our districts, of the city, and I think that they should have the opportunity to weigh in and communicate with us about what they think this policy should be.
Madam Chair, can I jump in at this point? Chief of Staff has pointed out to me something which, being business, it looks, it appears that there may have been an extension granted from the U.S. Department of Education to extend that deadline to April twenty-fourth for this. I'm just looking at this very quickly. Money goes to second. That might, not that against the special meeting, but you would have another meeting on the twenty-second rather than having to schedule a special meeting. I'm looking at this very quickly.
It's April twenty-third, five o'clock.
April twenty-third, yeah, that, it looks like twenty-fourth would be for the state to turn it in, so we've got the twenty-third. We, we still have a meeting on the twenty-second. I'm, again, I'm not against you doing a meeting this week, but if it would be easier to use a meeting date that you already have, it appears that there is an extension this time period.
Can you, I mean, I feel like news is coming at us real fast. Cami, can you email the school board so you can just, we can look at what you just said?
I'm, yeah, I'm looking at, if it's official, it does appear that there may be an, a ten-day extension has been granted. And I'm looking to see, Dr. Robertson, have you seen it out of BDOE? I'm seeing this out of reporting schedules on there. I'm not.
Yeah, I'll send it to him right now.
If that's the case, then not that you couldn't have a meeting this Thursday, but you would have a regular school board meeting scheduled between now and that date, so if that helps at all.
Ms. Vice Chair Weems.
Um, yes, whether the date is extended or not to the twenty-third, I will not be supporting any deferral. I don't think that it's going to change our direction or our need to start on this because there's some work to be done. Thank you.
Okay, so I call for a vote. Mr. Cummings, could you please restate your motion?
Um, I'd like to amend my motion to go to the next meeting, then, the April twenty-second.
Ms. Rogers, do you second that amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to vote on the amendment to move this to the April twenty-second meeting. That will be the vote that we're having. Is there any discussion on that? Vice Chair Weems.
Again, I won't be supporting that because as a time crunch, that gives us less than, you know, fifteen hours or twenty-four hours for the certification. Thank you.
Mr. Cummings, I'm going to go ahead and switch to line. I'll come back to you, though. Are you, are you still wanting to be able to keep yourself in line? Okay, Ms. Rogers.
Um, there are some, there's some stuff in the language that I am concerned about that will inadvertently suspend services to our students.
We're discussing deferring right now.
Right, so that's why I'm okay with deferring it so that we have time to actually, that also grants us more time to see what we need to do. I feel like this is very hasty because we don't want to lose our funding, but we can do a better job of making sure that we're not inadvertently cutting things that we don't want to cut.
Mr. Culpepper.
Yeah, two things. One, I do think that the way this is written, it points out that the superintendent and staff is to work with counsel to ensure that exactly that doesn't happen, that we don't cut things that shouldn't be cut, but that we, that we address immediately things we are aware of that don't comply with these guidelines. And I think that's our obligation. The second thing I would say is, Mr. Cummings' point about public comment is a hundred percent valid. But I would point out that the issue of DEI didn't come up yesterday, it didn't come up last night when I sent this email. It has been present, and there have been speakers here discussing DEI on both sides of the coin. So I think the public has had an opportunity to comment.
Mr. Cummings.
I think that, I mean, specifically where I think the public has to have opportunity to comment and that we need, I would prefer to see this in information today is to know what exactly if we suspend policy, how that impacts our day-to-day operations for our school, for our kids, for our learners, for our staff. And I think, quite frankly, that, I mean, a lot of us ran on transparency, a lot of us ran on community, and we have a duty to the people we serve, the public, to have the opportunity to weigh in on specific things being voted on. That is a core tenet of the school board, it's a core tenet of our civil government, civil and civic government locally, that they have the opportunity to email us and connect with us. And so that's why I will support my motion.
Dr. Green.
The proposed motion on the floor from Mr. Cummings, I do support because I think it's very important as well that we have public input. Several comments referenced the quick turnaround time. Well, when we originally thought it was going to be the eleventh, we were going to have to address it tonight. So now we have time for the public to have input. I think it would only be fair that we do allow them to have input since now that. I think it would only be fair that we do allow them to have input since now that the timeline has been extended. And again, I repeat, we were going to push this. Some of us were going to try to vote on this tonight thinking that it was going to be five P.M. on Thursday. And the only ask I have is Ms. Lynetti, on the twenty third, we have another major school division event that I would not want into conflict because some of the folks at that event may want to come to voice their opinion on this proposal if it is so decided that we will defer.
Your school board means the twenty second.
Right, but you had said something about the twenty third.
Oh, I think that's when we have to sign, send it in.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no more discussion, I call for the vote on Mr. Cummings' amended substitute motion. Please restate it.
Thank you. Motion to defer resolution to April twenty second, two thousand twenty-five school board meeting.
All right, voting board's open.
So Madam Chair, we have three ayes and six nays, so the substitute motion, the motion did not pass.
Okay, and we are now back to the original motion, and so that would be Dr. Green.
Thank you. I have been in public education for thirty-nine years, seventeen of those I have spent here in Virginia Beach Public Schools advocating for all students removing barriers to learning. With that being said, in my opinion, this proposed resolution that is currently on the floor for us to vote on, I find to be very offensive and intended to disrupt students' academic process. I'm disappointed that all school board members were not included in the original development of this resolution and that it only represents the perspective of a few of my colleagues who were permitted to be a part of the creation of this document. I did receive this document less than twenty-four hours ago when I opened it in my email around ten P.M. last night. It is also disappointing to believe that removing diversity, equity, and inclusion from our school division's best practices will ensure the continued academic success of all students. This is no more than extortion from the federal government to block education to certain groups of students in exchange for money. Do you really believe that if this resolution is executed, there will be, that there will not be more shakedowns from the federal government that will promote a reversion to segregated schools and to public education? This is a means to continue the destruction of public education. Not only is this resolution shameful, it is full of ambiguities. For example, it contradicts many requirements mandated by the Virginia Department of Education for ensuring academic process, progress, and opportunities for all students. Another contradiction to this extortion of public education in exchange for federal funding is tied to many data reports the school divisions, all school divisions, must submit to the Virginia Department of Education and federal agencies, which include the academic progress of students by subgroups such as race, gender, ethnicity, disabilities, and social and economic levels. It is equally important to show, ensure that our students have a diverse workforce, so eliminating practices that have promoted Virginia Beach City Public Schools to be able to hire the most highly qualified staff is demoralizing to our students and to our staff. I recognize that these executive orders from the federal government are hiding behind the cloak of cultural demeaning by disrupting the progress of Virginia Beach City Public School students who have demonstrated success because they had opportunity and equal access. This resolution also erodes the self-worth of our students while erasing the many contributions made by diverse cultures designed to make students feel proud of their heritage, even if they are not of European descent. So I ask, what faces do you see at the end of these appalling executive orders designed to destroy our school division? I see sixty-five thousand five hundred and forty-six students of various races, ethnicities, genders, and disabilities who should not become pawns in the cultural war, holding them hostage by withholding federal funding that have made this division a premier school division. I recognize some of my colleagues believe this is a way to ensure our students receive the necessary funding to be successful. I do not. It's discriminatory and the beginning of public education, of a public education system that not, that will not ensure the academic success of all students. Why would you want to destroy the self-esteem of our students and ensure failure of those who benefit from federally funded programs such as Title I, free and reduced lunch programs, and special education services, to name a few? I, there are many more programs that may be impacted if this resolution is signed. Remember, once you pay the ransom, there will be more demands for our school division to be extorted, holding funding sources hostage to opportunities designed to ensure our students become productive and contributing members to our American democracy as we know it today. Again, I have always been an advocate for students. I will continue to be. I have demonstrated that most recently by supporting the Recovery School, which provides a wonderful opportunity for our students who suffer with addictions, as well as recently the expansion of the bus transportation for achievable dream. I would be remiss and would not be able to rest at night knowing I did not speak out against this. I will not be voting for any resolution. You can amend it. You can remove the, the, a, one or two words that will not allow all students to move forward, all students.
Mr. Cummings?
I will echo my colleague's sentiment and her comments about my concerns of how the federal administration is looking to hold us hostage with withholding funds that impact the most vulnerable folks in our society, who in their right mind says we're going to not fund food for hungry kids? Now, I was raised religious. Jesus said, when you're hungry, give someone food to eat. You don't withhold it because you disagree with them. And to me, to see this resolution, to see this come down from the administration, to recognize the legitimacy of not federal law, of an executive order, with Lord knows how many have already been challenged, how many mistakes have already been made with these executive orders. I just don't give any legitimacy to that body. It's unfortunate that they're at the point where they think we as an institution cannot feed our kids because we have a difference of ideas. I find that awful and abhorrent, and just morally, just, it just hurts my heart that that is the pieces and things that they would say and that they would do. So I have, you know, the Dear Letter colleague thing pulled up, and I just read through this, and I just wonder, you know, this is not what I see happening in Virginia Beach City Public Schools. I see teachers, I see educators working day in, day out to make sure that our kids thrive and that they survive and that they obtain the next steps necessary to find success in their life. And so I will not be supporting this resolution.
Mr. Culpepper?
The purple is off the hook. I don't know what to say. Don, let me ask you something. Sorry, Mr. Superintendent. Is there anything in this resolution here that would require you to take food out of anybody's mouth?
Nothing that specifically speaks to food out of students' mouth. I think the reference is, one of the things that has come out is that whether or not All Hungry Students Act, which is part of federal funding, would be subject to removal if you were in violation of the executive order. So I think that's the reference.
Oh, it's part of all federal funding, you mean?
Yes, all federal funding, yes.
Well, I'm somewhat entertained by the fact that people have suddenly woke up to the fact that the Federal Department of Education extorts localities. That's been going on for fifty years, and apparently it's only a problem now because it's demanding something some people don't like. The core of this is Title VI of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four. No person in the United States shall, on the ground of race, color, or national origin, be excluded from participation in, being denied the benefits of, or be subject to discrimination in any program or activity receiving federal financial assistance. That's basically what this is saying, do. This is saying, don't discriminate. Don't discriminate in favor of anybody based on national origin, color, or race. Don't discriminate against anybody based on race, color, or national origin. To some degree, I don't know what to say because in my lifetime, that used to be how things mostly were, and I recognize that everybody has a different life. I think a lot of people run around thinking that they're the only one who ever has a hard time in their life, or that they're the only one that has a hard time, and because I have a hard time is because people don't like the color of my skin, or people don't like my hair color, people don't like my eyes, people don't like the way I walk, people don't like the way I talk. The latter one's justifiable. Everybody's got a hard life. Everybody works hard. Individuals have an obligation to treat one another with dignity and respect. They absolutely do. We as a, we as a government institution have an obligation to treat everybody the same, and that's what this does.
Ms. Rogers?
I would like to submit a substitute motion for a substitute resolution, I guess. Yes.
Will you motion and read your substitute, please?
Thank you. Okay, so you want me to read it first before I comment? Okay, so to comply with, resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance, whereas the School Board of City of Virginia Beach has previously adopted policies, procedures, practices, and strategic framework, and whereas President Trump signed Executive Order fourteen one ninety on January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty-five, entitled Ending Radical Indoctrination in K-12 Schooling, and whereas February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, the United States Department of Education Office for Civil Rights, the USDAO, published a Dear Colleague Letter reiterating legal requirements under Title, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four and Equal Protection Clause of the United States Constitution, as whereas February twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five, the USDAO released frequently as questions about racial preferences and stereotypes under Title VI of Civil Rights Act. And whereas on April third, two thousand twenty-five, the School Board of City of Virginia Beach received a request for certification of compliance from the Virginia Department of Education titled Reminder of Legal Obligations Undertaken in Exchange for Receiving Federal Financial Assistance and Request for Certification under Title VI and SFFA versus Harvard, whereas the deadline for the certification is April eleventh, two thousand twenty-five, at five P.M., although. Now therefore be resolved that the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach School Board directs the superintendent or designee to work with legal counsel for the school board to take the necessary steps to comply with federal and state law. The school board directs the superintendent to rename the Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to better reflect the work being completed in that office and to comply with federal and state laws. The school board further directs the superintendent to work with legal counsel for the school board to continue all educational program offerings to ensure they're in compliance with both federal and state law. The School Board Policy Review Committee will review Policy five dash four to ensure compliance with federal and state law and bring recommended changes to the school board for approval no later than May thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. The school board directs the superintendent or designee to work with legal counsel for the school board to suspend any portion of the two thousand twenty-five or two thousand thirty strategic framework to be in compliance with federal and state law. And the school board directs the superintendent or designee to recommend modifications to the two thousand two hundred and five and two thousand thirty strategic framework to be in compliance with federal and state law for information no later than May thirty first, two thousand twenty-five. The school board directs the superintendent or designee to work with legal counsel for the school board to evaluate employment, contracting, and purchasing practices to ensure consistency with federal and state law. The school board directs the superintendent to sign the certification and send it to the Virginia Department of Education. Superintendent or designee is directed to provide the school board with timely updates concerning compliance with the resolution. Resolution is adopted eighth day of April twenty twenty-five. I had concerns with some of the language. I completely understand Dr. Green's issues and concerns, and I echo them. However, I also understand the school board we're sitting in, and the majority of the school board wants this to go forward, but my concerns are with the language. And so I'm proposing this amendment so that we are, again, complying with federal and state regulations, which at times we need to do what the federal law is requiring us as well as what state is requiring us. So I want to make sure that we don't have to continually bring resolutions if federal and state laws or guidance change. Have one resolution. We confer, we always do what federal and state laws tell us to, and we don't have to bring another resolution when things change. We see how quickly things are changing at the federal level. I think it's important that we aren't continually having to change what we say we're going to do. In section two, I want to give the superintendent the ability to name the office that is right now Department of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion to whatever he thinks is necessary as per his contract. So I want to make sure that he's able to do that, and we're not ordering him to say, you know, what the office is going to be. In section three, I'm highly concerned about the term suspending when it comes to our students' programs, and so that's why I said amended to continue the educational programs to ensure that they're in compliance. I don't want there to be any interruption of service to students. I think that that's our number one goal, make sure our students are always served. And so if we go to suspending services, we don't know how long it's going to take to unsuspend them, and that could cause a major disruption to service, service to students. I'm also concerned about the possibility of removing necessary information. For example, the equity dashboard, as Dr. Green stated, includes information that we are required to report to the BDOE. I don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I want to make sure that we are keeping information that we are required to report and not completely removing dashboards. So I feel like if we are naming less, we're able to then do more and, you know, keep information that we need to keep and not just getting rid of things and then realizing, oops, I needed that. Naming specific changes like the equity plan and not naming others. I don't want to be said, well, why did you name this and not name that? I think if we generalize, it allows us to make necessary changes without saying, we're going to exactly do one, two, or three, but oops, we forgot four, five, and six. I feel like we just need to say we're going to comply with state and federal laws. That's what we've always done. That's what we need to continue to do. And in saying that, I think that we're actually going to be doing what we need to do, and we're not going to be accidentally doing things that we don't mean to do.
Mr. Cummings?
I feel like I need some points of information.
Who from?
Uh, well, well, me.
Me, her? Me or Ms. Rogers?
Uh, probably Dr. Robertson.
Dr. Robertson, okay.
And so this relates to curriculum, uh, School Board Policy Five Four F, and the dichotomy between Ms. Rogers' resolution and the original one proposed with the word suspend verse, I think what she says, review. Five, four, F four says class instructional activities and extracurricular programs. So instructional activities, I assume means coursework um, designed to provide opportunities for cross-cultural and cross-racial interactions that foster respect for diversity. If we suspend this policy, how would that impact curriculum? I'm thinking along with clubs as well, uh, as a parent with a student at the Tallwood Global, you know, World Language Global Studies Academy. They have upcoming events that celebrate cross-cultural, you know, awareness, celebrate diversity. If we suspend this policy, how does that impact these extracurricular programs?
So one of the, let me talk about the curricular content first. Um, the State Department of Education in Virginia, uh, has an evaluation standard, a standard six on culturally competent and culturally competent, see, what's the standard? Don't need to know it, Dr. Traubman, the director. Yeah, the, so in our evaluation instrument, we have the two things required by the state of Virginia that could be in conflict with a suspension of Policy Five Four. Um, in addition, within the curriculum that is given to us by the state of Virginia, there are, uh, examples across curricular area and content areas where the resources are provided to provide, to meet that standard of um, creating a classroom setting where all students see themselves in the learning. So, the Department of Teaching and Learning Team has been looking through their existing, um, uh, content, and they have several concerns, uh, about what this could mean. Um, and in terms of clubs and activities, uh, unfortunately, I think there could be a case that some of the planned activities may be in conflict with this and, you know, a suspension of Policy Five Four um, will probably lead us to cancel those activities until we're sure. Uh, 'cause the other concern is, quite frankly, talking to superintendents, when I put my name on this document, I've just put my li- my name on the line to be fired. 'Cause as soon as something gets reported, and it gets come back, and somebody says, um, we're investigating Virginia Beach City Public Schools for something in this document, superintendent's gonna be fired. With cause. So there's great concern among the superintendents in Virginia as to putting their name on this document. I will do what's required by the school board. But to Mr. Cummings' point, there's a great deal of anxiety around the, the term suspension of something versus a, a more closer look.
Thank you for that clarification. I think that was part of the reason I wanted to defer this vote, because I don't, based on the original reading, I don't think the downstream impact of clubs, co-curricular involvement, courses, curriculum, and I mean, if you read through Policy Five Four, go to their curriculum and instruction section, curriculum and instructional materials, you know, did those get changed immediately when we suspend the policy? Do we stop tutoring programs after school if we suspend this policy?
No, we would not stop tutoring programs. Those are for all students.
'Cause F, you know, F five does say, part of the inclusivity policy is tutoring during, after, or after school. So I have extreme hesitation towards the word suspend, and why, while I still don't like the policy, I would lean in towards, um, Ms. Rogers' language in that. And I'd love to hear from my colleagues what they think about co-curricular things being canceled by our kids where they no longer get to participate in their club activities.
Dr. Green?
Two things. First, thank you, Ms. Rogers, for your effort for rewording. But for me, it's still problematic. So thank you. My second question is, oh, well, not, first, next question, that was comment, is for Ms. Lanetti. So Ms. Lanetti, who is it? Is the superintendent required to sign this document? Meaning such as, I mean, can a school board chair sign it? I mean, does it have to be the superintendent?
The certification doesn't specify. It actually reads SCA, State Education Association slash LEA. So who's ever officially authorized to sign on behalf of that agency, could be the superintendent, and it could be some of the school board designates to do it, but it doesn't specify who has to sign it.
So Dr. Robertson doesn't have to sign it, so could the school board chair be, is allowed to sign it?
If the school board designates and asks the school board chair, you know, the school member to sign, that could happen, because school board chair would be considered a representative of the school division.
Right, that was my point, okay.
Uh, I am gonna chime in on the certification. I do not run the day-to-day operations of the division. Therefore, I am unequipped to certify whether or not things are in compliance or not in compliance with that. Um, there is a false claim statement. I think that it would be very unfair for my colleagues to ask me to sign something that I cannot oversee, so I just wanted to throw that out there. Um, Ms. Rogers?
Um, this is for Dr. Robertson, again, um. There are clubs. I don't need to say clubs. I guess, I guess it's a club. It's a kind of tutoring that we have students who are paired with special education students, and it is to promote, um, inclusivity with special education students. Would that be affected with the policies being suspended?
That would not.
Ms. Dwyer, um, we're speaking to Ms. Rogers' substitute.
Yeah, I just wanted to back you up on that. I don't think anybody sitting here would want their name there, um, and have that accountability. Uh, let's be honest, guys, um, we're not in compliance. That's, that's what the issue is. And we've been given a mandate, and there are no other options.
Vice Chair Williams?
Yes, I totally agree with Ms. Dwyer. Um, we are not in compliance. And to ensure that we get seventy, eighty, ninety million dollars for our most, to continue for our most vulnerable students, and to make sure that we can sign, or Dr. Robertson can sign with confidence that we are gonna do something, and that's what this resolution does. It says we're gonna start acting, or we're gonna start doing so that we will be compliant. So I appreciate the, the passion for my colleagues, Ms. Rogers, I appreciate that substitute, but I will not be able to, to support that. Thank you.
Ms. Rogers?
Um, I understand everyone's concern about not being in compliance. However, I am absolutely certain that with the language that's in there, we're gonna be eliminating things that we should not. And I don't want to be responsible for interrupting any students' academic or educational program offerings. That's, the language specifically says to suspend all educational program offerings. That's, it's doing too much. We need to make sure that we can review everything without suspension to our students' programmings. We are here to ensure our students are being educated. This decision by the federal government to tell us that we need to make changes should not suspend their educational programming. They should not know what's going on. We can do this without them knowing, if we choose that. But we have to make that decision. That's what this language is doing. We are making the decision to comply with federal and state law. Yes, we will do that. But I do not want to interrupt any child's programming, because we didn't realize that when we put this language in here, that's what was gonna happen. So, I'm super strongly advocating for us to sign this amend, to vote on this amendment, so we don't do something inadvertently. I've been on the education side in the classroom when decisions were made, and the full extent of our decision-making affects the students. And I then, as the teacher, had to say, I'm sorry, kids, we have to do it this way now, because that's what we're being told to do. It is awful. And I don't want the students in our school division to have to feel the effects of the chaos of what's going on in our federal and state decision-making. I mean, we're here to do the right thing, I get that. I understand that we want, that the majority of the board wants to be compliant. I don't want to eliminate programs inadvertently that our students need.
We're gonna move on to Ms. Dwyer, and then we're gonna vote on the substitute motion.
Ms. Rogers? And I know, I know you're not-
Ms. Dwyer, you cannot, you have to direct all your comments at, at Chair, um, unless you're getting a point of information.
On what Ms. Rogers said, and I wanna remind everybody, we took an oath. We can't go behind the federal government's back and do what we so choose to do.
Okay, I call for the votes on Ms. Rogers' substitute motion. Mine isn't showing up.
How do you vote? Okay, so Madam Chair, we have two ayes and seven nays, so Mrs. Rogers' substitute motion or the amended, uh, resolution did not pass.
Okay, so we are back to Mr. Culpepper's original motion. Um, I'm going to ask if there's any further discussion, since everyone has had the opportunity to speak, that you be succinct in your remarks. Um, is there any further discussion? Ms. Rogers?
I understand many of the board members feel like they need to be compliant, but I can't support something that is going to interrupt student learning.
Mr. Callen?
I appreciate all the comments and all the perspectives that are shared. These are not simple or easy issues to address and resolve. The one point that I did want to make, however, is the fact that the name change of this department is actually a return to the name of the department of just a few years ago. It had previously been known as the Department of Opportunity and Achievement. It's being asked to just return to that same name under these new conditions made available by this executive order. There's a great deal that accompanies the verbiage and the terminology in this day and age. But I think if we stop and reflect and realize that not too long ago, that's what the name of this department was. And it's a call to return to it. For that matter, I'm in favor of it.
Mr. Cummings?
I will be brief. I will not be supporting the current resolution, as I do have serious concerns about suspending our policy. I mean, AP courses, everything in this, I just don't think that is given enough thought and time, and I'm very disappointed that we did not let the public have input. Um, we did take an oath, and that oath also involved listening to our constituents, regardless of whether we agree or disagree. I've listened to very many constituents during my time, um, in office, along with when I was running for office, and had conversations with folks. I do think this should have been, um, pushed down the line for us to have more conversations and more public input, so I will not be supporting it.
Okay, now that everyone's had the chance to speak, um, I am going to briefly speak. Um, on March seventh, one of our board members had asked how much federal funding we receive, and the total of those funds is seventy-four million, two hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars. In fact, tonight, we voted on two things that probably are connected to those federal funds. We are not in compliance, uh, with this at this time. We're just not. We, um, and we have to get into compliance. And so, um, you know, I feel like the other thing is, we're gonna lose funding. Lunch was mentioned. If we don't get in compliance, uh, the federal free and reduced cost lunch, reading materials for vulnerable students, um, funding for Title One schools, Special Education, McKinney-Vento Act. Um, so, those that need it the most. Um, as far as Policy Five dash four goes, there will be public input, because this is going to come back to the board. Um, in fact, the only thing that is in this resolved section that will not come back for a future vote is the name change. Um, so I do support this, so, um, I call for a vote on Mr. Culpepper's resolution to comply with legal obligations in exchange for receiving federal financial assistance. Just to clarify, colleagues, our, our own school board rules say that once we call for the vote, we cannot go back into discussion. So that's the reason why we didn't go back in.
Okay, so Madam Chair, we have six ayes and three nays, so the motion to pass for the resolution presented by Mr. Culpepper.
Okay, thank you. We are now on to committee organization and board reports. Do any board members have anything to report? Dr. Green?
Thank you. Um, first of all, Legislative Committee meeting on Friday, the eleventh, at eleven A.M. here at the School Administration Building. Um, I also want to thank, uh, Dr. Traubman and the Department of Human Resources for, um, a wonderful recruitment fair on the twenty-eighth, I believe it was, Saturday, twenty-eighth. I had an opportunity to go to Landstown High School. Um, and thank you for ensuring that our students have great staff to support them, uh, with their learning. And then the last thing, a reminder or an announcement, and you'll be hearing a lot more about it, on April twenty-third at six P.M. at Newtown Road Elementary School, we will be having a town hall meeting with regards to, uh, to receive community input about the tri-campus. Uh, if you recall, at our last board meeting, uh, we were presented with two options. Uh, thank you, Ms. Livas, for helping staff get that information out. Um, so, it also, the portal's open if people would like to go on and, um, provide their input to the configurations with regards to the two options for the tri-campus. But again, in-person town hall meeting will be on April twenty-third at six P.M. at Newtown Road Elementary. And the online portal for providing input is now open through, I believe it's April twenty-seventh, Dr. Robertson, April twenty-seventh? Or twenty-sixth?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing no other reports, we are now adjourned at eight oh eight P.M.